I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting of November 3, 2025 to order. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Murray, councillor and chair of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. I would like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see the clerk. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please ensure that your cellphone is turned off or on silent, and the town of Lincoln committee of the whole meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. Closed captioning is available on all of our videos by selecting the closed captioning button at the bottom right of the video. Item number two on our agenda is rural call. Members of committee are in attendance with regrets from councillor Renshaw. We have staff in attendance, and additionally, we have the town solicitor, Tom Holinsky, in attendance. Item number three, are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none, moving on to confirmation of agenda, do members have any amendments to the order of the agenda? And seeing none, item number five, we have no statutory public meeting this evening. Number six is our consent agenda. We are now considering the consent agenda inclusive of the Housing Select Committee minutes of June 10, 2025, the Museum Advisory Committee minutes of September 4, 2025, and the summary of the province's proposed population and employment forecast methodology, PD-26-25. Would any member of committee like to remove an item from the consent agenda to discuss? All right, then, there being no further discussion, I have a motion moved by councillor Mickelick that all items listed under the heading of Consent Agenda for Monday, November 3, 2025 be adopted as recommended: the Housing Select Committee minutes of June 10, 2025, the Museum Advisory Committee minutes of September 4, 2025, summary of the province's proposed population and employment forecast methodology, PD-26-25. I will now ask our clerk to open that vote.
Thanks, Chair, and the vote is now open. I'll close that vote, and that carries.
Thank you. We now begin the Planning and Economic Development agenda. Item number 7.1 is delegations, but we have no delegations this evening, so we'll move on to 7.2, which is reports. We will now consider item 7.2.1, Report PD-22-25 regarding Clean Yard Bylaw Amendments. The manager of municipal law enforcement will provide comments. Mr. Barkway, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time this evening. The report that I have in front of you in the draft bylaw proposals in regards to our Clean Yards bylaw, and the amendments are such to ensure that there's clarity in regards to the responsibility requirements of the property owners to maintain their properties, which would include and do include the boulevards that are adjacent to their properties, as well making a more straightforward approach by the officers in investigations in regards to the issuance of orders, the timelines better involved, and the follow-up and enforcement that can take place in regards to the Clean Yards files. I leave it open for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barkway. Are there any questions from committee? Councillor Petryeva, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Murray, and through you to Mr. Barkway. Mike, is this going to be more of a officer observant? Are we still relying on complaint-driven?
Through you, Chair. Thank you for the question. Clean Yards investigations can be both proactive and reactive. However, when you're speaking about properties, an officer can't enter onto a property to look into a backyard without there being reasonable grounds to enter the property. So if at the property, the concern is in regards to the front yard of a property, the officer can view that from the street, then that's accepted practice. But if it's in respect to a rear yard, the officer can't inspect without there being reasonable grounds to attend on the property. So there would still be a reactive and proactive approach in this.
Okay. And through you, Chair, yeah, because this is more of a change based on the boulevards, right? So, I mean, boulevard is pretty observant from the road. There's chronic offenders that we all know about, so I would like to see a more proactive approach when driving around, because I think that's one of the frustrations of the public, is it needs to be reactive rather than proactive. So if we can proceed down that route, I think that's excellent change. So, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Mickelick, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to Mike Barkway. Just to follow up on that a little bit, you know, when you mentioned if you can't see what's in the backyard, that sort of thing, and I'm not sure if a neighbor's complaint would qualify, but what about the use of drones? Has there been any thoughts of the use of drones to perform investigations of areas that are fenced in or not easy to see?
Through you, Chair. Thank you for the question. In respect to the first part of that, I think you mentioned two different things. If a neighbor was to complain, that enacts a reactive investigation, so we would be able then to enter the property, go into the backyard. In regards to the use of drones, I believe, I would like to research that for you, but I believe there is case law in regards to going over property to obtain information on the property itself. I don't know that we would actually be permitted to do so. I think that would be, you're then viewing and making observations on a property that's entering the property, whether we're using a drone or whether we're stepping foot in there, so I don't know whether that would be permitted or not, but that is something I can definitely look into and get an answer to you for.
Perfect. Yeah, no, I'm not sure if it, I'm not sure what ownership looks like, you know, above a property, but certainly above a subdivision street that is a municipally-owned property, then you probably would get a view. So, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barkway, I have a question as well. So, the, kind of tying on to what the other councillors just said, so the boulevards that we're discussing, are we updating this bylaw because we've had challenges with homeowners not recognizing that they're responsible for the boulevards, or is it just housekeeping that we want to make sure that our bylaw is clear and there are no misunderstandings?
Thank you, Chair, for the question. A quick answer would be that it's both. Every year, I would say, out of, last year, we had 162 Clean Yard files, complaints that came in throughout the year of investigations we had. I would say, without going back and counting each one, I would say probably 10% to 12% of those would have some portion of a boulevard involved. And without it being, without there being clear language within the bylaw to specify that, there is some challenges when there is a lack of awareness by the property owner. So, it was the belief of staff to make sure it's clear within the bylaw, so it's not just a known common practice in Ontario, which is the case right now.
All right. Excellent. Thank you very much. There being no further questions, I have a motion moved by councillor Petryeva that committee receive and file as information, Report PD-22-25 regarding Clean Yards bylaw amendments, and that committee recommends council approve the draft bylaw attached as Appendix B to amend Clean Yards bylaw, 2018-92. I will now ask our clerk to open the vote.
Thanks, Chair, and the vote is now open. I'll close that vote. That carries.
Thank you very much. We will now consider item number 7.2.2, Report EDC-14-25 regarding Indigenous Engagement and Cultural Practices Policy and Soho Reeson Park Use Policy. The senior curator at Museum Operations and Events will provide comments. Ms. Rosma, please do go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to the council. This evening, we're presenting two complementary policies for council's consideration: the Indigenous Engagement and Cultural Practices Policy, as well as the Soho Reeson Park Use Policy. Together, these policies create a clear and consistent framework for how the town engages and consults with indigenous communities, and when, how cultural practices such as smudging or sacred fires can be safely accommodated across the town and at town facilities, and how Soho Reeson Park will be used as a cultural or educational space. So, the first is the Indigenous Engagement and Cultural Practices Policy, and this policy really formalizes practices that the town has already been following for many, many years. The town of Lincoln is recognized as a leader in municipal indigenous relationship building in Niagara, and we hear that from our partners all the time. We have a strong, respectful, and ongoing relationship with both the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation and the Niagara Regional Native Centre. We already consult regularly and collaboratively, so this policy does not introduce any new obligation to consult, nor does it really change when consultation occurs. What it does do is clarify who staff should reach out to and when, ensure that consultation begins early in the process, so we're not doing it partway through, and prevents overconsulting, or even inconsistent or sort of ad hoc approaches as staff or leadership changes. The policy is accompanied by two procedures, which accommodate cultural practices such as smudging or sacred fires. So, at the museum, we've been accommodating smudging for many, many years, and there's been an increase of requests at other facilities, including the Fleming Center and facilities that are rented out to the public. As Soho Reeson Park opens, we expect to see an increase in such requests, because now there's a designated spot in the community, the park. The procedures were developed with fire services and public works. They clearly outline safety practices, responsibilities, notifications, coordination steps, and the role of staff in supporting these ceremonies. So, to be clear, these practices aren't recreational fires. They're legally protected forms of religious practice. So, it just really outlines how and when and the notification processes that should occur before these ceremonies happen. So, this framework ensures that they're supported appropriately by staff when they're requested. So, the Indigenous Engagement Cultural Practices Policies and the two related procedures really strengthen and protect what we're already doing well. It should reduce confusion for staff. It shouldn't create any additional workload or obligations, and it's really just meant to provide clarity, consistency, and continuity if staff or leadership changes. So, it reinforces the relationships that we've worked very hard over the last several years to build. The second policy will be spoken to by my colleague Courtney Corbeal, who is the curator of engagement and visitor experience. Actually, we have long titles.
Hello. Thank you, Olivia. So, the second policy speaks directly to the use of Soho Reeson Park, our new park that just opened this Saturday, and this park was created with our indigenous partners for a very specific meaning, to host cultural events and ceremonies. So, we want to ensure that the intention of this space is preserved and kept, and that is done through this policy. So, it just really confirms that the park is not a rental venue. It is not a general-use space, and that the programming will be indigenous-led or delivered by organizations that serve indigenous communities, or co-developed with the culture team, which is very similar to how we run the programming at the museum already. We don't allow folks to rent space to host programming. They must do so in collaboration to ensure that it aligns with what we're doing at the museum, and similarly, the same will be for programming in the park as well. Thank you.
So, these two policies will be administered by the culture team. So, we'll review and approve park use requests, coordinate with fire services and public works if a smudging or sacred fire request comes in. We'll also support ceremony planning while respecting these cultural protocols, and if needed, if requested, we'll provide guidance to other town departments on matters concerning consultation. Again, the town, we're really superstars when it comes to our indigenous relationships, so I don't think we'll, the culture team will be needed all that often. These policies really just reinforce the town's commitment to reconciliation and support these culturally significant practices, and also protect the new Soho Reeson Park as a place for learning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Olivia and Courtney. Thank you for coming, and again, just a shout-out for the opening. This weekend, as you mentioned, I wasn't able to attend, but I did see photos, and the artwork in particular looks stunning, so, well done. Do we have questions? We do. I'll start with Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I was really pleased to see these coming so quickly on the heels of Saturday. I think that was really quite ideal, but still a great deal of detail that you needed to be paying attention to. A couple of things. On page 39, under legislative authority, it speaks to Treaty III, and my question is for, a question is around the definition of a rights holder. So, is the differentiation to be made between a property owner and a rights holder, or do I have that right? Do I have that correct?
Yeah, there is absolutely a difference between rights holder and property owners. I don't know if you want to speak more to it, but the treaty number three is a land purchase agreement that was made in 1792 between the Mississaugas of the Credit and the Crown. So, when you scan, we actually just put signs around the town about this. When you scan the QR code, you'll learn about the history of the treaty, and you'll see that this treaty actually gave the Crown the rights to the land, and they can use it to build settlements, and that's how we built the town of Lincoln. So, the treaty actually affirms municipal authority, property rights, public access, and our right to develop. So, when we talk about rights holders with the treaty, we're talking more about our shared stewardship, so our obligation to consult with them on things like waterways, wetlands, the things that concern all of us, not individual matters about property rights and where our houses are.
Okay. And, Madam Chair, the second question I would have is in relation to the statement that was made about ceremonial activities. Ceremonial activities that we are talking about for the purpose of this policy are those that are mentioned in the policy. They include indigenous ceremonies. The park is open to everyone, but it's only indigenous ceremonies that we allow in this park. Is that all correct?
Through you, Chair, to the mayor. So, the park is a park. It's available for passive public use, for people to walk through, read the signs, learn, reflect. Programming that happens in the park, educational programming, needs to be initiated by our partners who helped us build the park: the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation, the Niagara Regional Native Centre, or the town of Lincoln's cultural team. So, the park is available to be used. We will be using it for school programs and land-based programming, but really, the intention of the park is to be a space for indigenous learning, and also a space for ceremony. So, we do have a space in the park for sacred fires. Sacred fires are religious practice where fires are lit usually for mourning, commemoration, or to mark special events. They're always held with a designated firekeeper, who's there to maintain safety and the cultural aspects of that ceremony. So, the park is also available for that use, and you saw at the opening that there is a sacred fire pit there. It's under lock and key. The keys are kept at the museum. When a sacred fire is requested, it'll come through the culture team. We'll verify if the request is culturally appropriate, and then pass on the information to fire services, as well as public works, just to make sure all the safety components of having a fire are taken care of.
Okay. And on page 40, partway down the page, subsection 1, there's a reference to Call to Action 43 that requires that we adopt the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. Is that something that we plan on doing? Is there a cost to that? What can you tell us about this?
Through you, Chair, to the mayor. There is a call for municipalities to adopt UNDRIP. That's the United Nations Declaration for the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. We did use that as a guiding framework when we developed this policy, but there are no current conversations to formally adopt it at the municipality. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in reviewing our policies and procedures, that I just don't think there's the staff capacity currently to undertake. But it is on our minds for the future, but no immediate timeline.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mayor Easton. Councillor Russell, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to presenter. Just a couple of quick questions. Just wondering about the interpretation that you have of Treaty III that you mentioned, where is it that the land was ceded to us and we give rights to the indigenous peoples, or is it the reverse, where the land is theirs and they give us rights?
Through you, Chair, to the councillor. The treaty number three was signed in 1972, and the land was ceded to the Crown, and the Crown used it to build our settlement. But within the treaty, there are stipulations for areas of shared stewardship. So, we consult with the Mississaugas of the Credit, who are the treaty holders, on areas of those shared stewardships, like wetlands, water. As part of our relationship building, they also like to be consulted on areas of major zoning changes or amendments to the official plans. But that's just something that we do to foster good relationships, and that's not outlined in the treaty.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Again, I think that's just an important clarification, that, again, the land was, again, ceded to the Crown, and they have, we've been giving them rights, again, to all those things mentioned by you. I'm wondering if it's possible, before this is ratified at council, to get either like an executive summary or a summary of what those actual rights are, just for specificity, so that should any, I don't want to say land use, or any future question come up about land rights, rights of ownership, rights of use comes up, it's clearly identified and outlined in the policy?
Well, I mean, absolutely. The treaty is quite short, so I can summarize it, but the treaty itself is fairly, fairly simple and easy to read. It is, we did cede, they did cede the land to the Crown. It was a land purchase agreement, so that gives us the rights to do any sort of development and what we will with it. But, again, those areas of shared stewardship, so if we were to change waterways or wetlands, just like we consult with the NPCA for things like that, we have a duty to consult with the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
No, and I appreciate that. And, again, I went through, on a late night, through the treaty agreement, and, again, written in 1792, the language is quite ambiguous and old-fashioned, and I think that's why, again, even just, I go into a quick little summary of what those specific rights are, embed that as an appendix, I think would go a long way to making sure that every line of communication is clear in the future.
Thanks, councillor.
Thank you.
Councillor Mickelick, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you to Olivia. Just a question about, like, the fires and that sort of thing. A lot of times, I see in Charles Daly Park, or in Jordan Park, Jordan Lions Park, I see barbecuing going on. I see people bringing their own barbecuing. Is there any issue or any consideration, or is this allowed at this park?
I can't speak to, sorry, through you, Chair. I can't speak to any other municipal park that's an issue with bylaw. I'm fairly sure that recreational fires are not allowed in any town of Lincoln Park, with the exception of sacred fires in Soho Reeson. But, again, that's out of the scope of my duty at the town, so I'm not sure if somebody from bylaw can chime in on that. But, yeah, I'm fairly sure that recreational fires are not allowed in any town of Lincoln Park, with the exception of Soho Reeson, which will have these cultural fires. And they have different regulations for fire size. There's also a lot of safety protocols that we have developed with fire services, just to make sure everything is as safe as it can reasonably be.
Would you like, sorry, councillor, would you like to hear from our bylaw team?
That would be terrific, yeah. Just, it's just something I see personally at various parks, that people are bringing, they actually have their own, you can buy a whole barbecue kit in a foil box, and then they throw it all in the garbage when they're complete. So, and I don't know what constitute an open fire, or a barbecue, or any of this sort of thing with a pack of hot dogs beside it. I'm not sure.
Mr. Barkway, please go ahead.
Through you, Chair. The information is correct. Other than at Charles Daly, there are no other municipal parks in Lincoln that have designated fire areas or barbecue stations. Charles Daly has some that are set up. They're identified on a map. They're tarmac'd areas within the park. I believe they're by the pavilion, and that's the only permitted locations for, and that they're supposed to be using the pulled hibachis that are in place. People are not supposed to be bringing their own fire stations into the park. We do recognize that it does happen. If it's brought to our attention, we try to address it, but we know it does happen. I really only ever heard of it at Charles Daly, but I'm sure it happens in other locations as well. We try to address it when we can.
Okay. No, I'm just, I appreciate that clarification, because I know, I know I've seen it at various parks where family gatherings, picnics, and then a barbecue comes up. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mickelick. Councillor Timmers, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Chair. So, thank you for this, Olivia and Courtney. I found it, it's very timely, and I was at the opening. It was just fantastic, and what a great event. It had such a great vibe there, like, in the crowd, you know, so many people came out, and it's just absolutely spectacular. I was so excited to be there. But I see in the report that there's going to be some training for staff and council, and I'm just wondering what that looks like, and when can we expect to participate in that? I think it's very important.
Through you, Chair. So, thus far, training has happened through HR. They have delivered many workshops for staff during the September 30th events, so that will continue, and it just lays out that those programs will continue. But we'll make sure through the museum that council receives invites to all appropriate events.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I think it's really important for council to participate, if they can, and to learn as much as they can about this. My only question I was thinking about is, you know, that parking area's been used for decades and decades, and I don't know how many years it's been there, forever. Do you foresee any issues with the parking, you know, being taken over when the flea market's in full swing, and, you know, that place can get really busy down there? And I'm just wondering if there's a special event planned at the park, like, how will that be managed with the parking? Because I know the customers are very used to parking in there, so.
Through you, Chair. I think that's really going to have to be on a case-by-case basis, and it's a challenge we have at the museum a lot. Parking in Jordan Village is and will always be a challenge. I think things will continue to improve as the regional roadwork is finished and in the works. I know there's conversations around pedestrian safety on that regional road. With the new and improved trail that leads to Soho Reeson Park, it also opens up the avenue for people to park at the museum or the municipal parking lot and walk down to the park through the new trail. So, if the parking lot is full, unfortunately, it's full. It is a, it is a public park, and we can't always control who's going to park, where they're going to park, but there are other ways to get there, and the ways to get there will continue to improve and become more and more safe as the years go by.
That trail is just fantastic. I would love to go through there, but it was very wet still, so. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Timmers. Mayor Easton, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The report on the settlement, it seemed to me that when the archaeological was done on that property, that there was really nothing of note found. I don't know whether that's accurate or not. However, is there a report on the settlement? Sounded like it was maybe over five kilometers. At any rate, whatever the report is, could we have access to that? Could we be educated around what activity there was there? I think it would be, at this point, a very good foundation for us in terms of what we know. I mean, in the past, we have, we spout off at great length to what happened with the United Empire loyalists and the Pennsylvania Germans. I think that we should be as fluent on the indigenous community as well. So, how about that? Is that something that we could have?
Through you, Chair, to the mayor. So, there was an archaeological assessment that was completed on the site of Soho Reeson Park, and nothing of note was found, which gave us the ability to build exactly how we wanted to, on the timeline that we wanted. But just half a kilometer away from the park, there was a major archaeological assessment that found evidence of a multi-generational burial site of the Neutral Nation, which really provides evidence that they were living in the area we now know as Jordan. really provides evidence that they were living in the area we now know as Jordan, and living there with enough families and population to support a multi-generational burial site. I can definitely find you information on that. And I can speak for Courtney as well, that we'd be happy to give a further, fuller presentation to council on the history of the Neutral Nation. More and more information comes to light each year, but they're not a living culture. They, their population sharply declined in the 1600s as a result of diseases and intertribal warfare. So what we know is, is through the archaeological record and the work of incredible historians. And I can actually pass that to Courtney. Courtney has a sleeper background in archaeology, so she can speak a little more to the legalities of archaeological assessments in the way that I can't. So, pass it over.
Yes. So, I, the report that you're talking about is actually now public record, so we can pull that and, and share that with all of you with no problems, once archaeology goes through and is sent off to, it's a new group that holds it now, the Ministry of, yes? Once it goes to them, it's then made public for, for everyone. So we can absolutely pull that. And it's a site that I'm sure a lot of you are, are familiar with. But as, I'm sure you're all aware with the things happening currently, Lincoln is just rich with archaeology. If you own land here, you can't go really in your backyard without finding something really awesome and cool. So we would love to, to talk to you more about that, if that's something you're interested in. We, we would love to share that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam.
Counselor Brune, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Olivia. So, just as some of my other colleagues have mentioned, just a great ceremony, great, great festivities at, at the park, and kudos to all staff that made this possible. Just as a follow-up to Counselor Timmers' question, and I think your, your answer was appropriate, you know, probably this is going to evolve. We've got parking issues at the museum, and probably in the near future, we'll have it down there. I guess my only comment would be, and also additional kudos to you, we've made a huge investment in the parking lot beside the Jordan Fire Station. And so we had a shuttle service there on, on the day, and it was wonderful. Not only was it just a small bus, it was a larger shuttle service, which everyone was raving about, and the comfort. So, you know, I, I guess I look to that. That, that's an investment we've made in that parking lot, and if we're going to have events there, I don't see any reason why we can't shuttle people down from up there. So, kudos to, to that shuttle service, and just wanted to put that out there for, for a comment. Thank you, Chair.
Through you, Chair, to the Counselor. Thank you for that comment. And that was a local Lincoln business as well, so we're happy to support local. So they're always available to all our events in Lincoln to support shuttle services.
So, excellent conversations. Thank you very much, Olivia and Courtney, for being here. As we have no further questions, I have a motion moved by Counselor Timmers, that committee receive and file for information, Report ED-14-25 regarding Indigenous Engagement and Cultural Practices Policy and Soho Reesin Park Use Policy, and that committee approve the Town of Lincoln's Indigenous Engagement and Cultural Practices Policy attached as Appendix A, and show a recent Park Neutral Nation Legacy Site Use Policy attached as Appendix D, Guiding Frameworks for Municipal Consultation, Engagement, and the Respectful Accommodation of Indigenous Cultural Practices, including the cultural use of Soho Reesin Park. I will now ask our clerk to open the vote.
Thanks, Chair. The vote is now open.
I'll close that vote. That carries. Thank you.
We will now consider Item 7.2.3, Report PD-25-25 Regarding Notice of Intention to Designate 4881 King Street, Beamsville. The manager of Planning and Development will provide comments. Mitch Kokiara, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and good, good evening. The Heritage Advisory Committee, together with town staff, have been actively engaging with property owners listed on the Heritage Registry to assess interest in pursuing formal designation. This initiative is in response to the Province's More Homes Built Faster Act, which requires properties to be formally designated by January 1st, 2027, or risk being removed from the non-designated registry. The owners of 4881 King Street in Beamsville expressed that they would support moving forward with designating their property. A heritage research report, including a statement of significance, was prepared by Heritage Advisory Committee member Ken Koal and shared with the property owners. This past September, the report was presented to the Heritage Advisory Committee and recommended designation. The property owners were in attendance at the meeting and confirmed their support. The owners have also read the draft notice of intention to designate and agree with the statement of significance. The subject property contains a 2.5-story brick dwelling and is located adjacent to Great Lakes Christian College. The property is historically linked to notable individuals, including John Henry Smith, grandson of one of Grimsby's earliest settlers, and his wife Rosetta Prudhomme, from another founding family. It was later owned and developed by Hugh Sinclair around 1905, who was deeply involved in Beamsville's civic life as a director, auditor, and postmaster. The house is a rare and distinguished example of red pressed brick construction, blending Queen Anne Revival and Edwardian Classicism styles, representing an important architectural period during Beamsville's early 20th century growth and recovery after the 1891 fire. The dwelling showcases the craftsmanship and materials of the Beamsville Pressed Brick Company, a key local industry founded in 1875, highlighting the community's industrial heritage through its distinctive red pressed bricks and rough brick vussoirs. The property contributes to the heritage character of the East End mixed-use corridor, complementing the historical streetscape of 19th century buildings, modest setbacks, and landscaped frontages that collectively reflect Beamsville's prosperous industrial and residential past. The property satisfies nine, sorry, five of the nine criteria for designation, as outlined in the research report. Staff therefore recommend the issuance of the Notice of Intention to Designate, and staff would also like to recognize Heritage Advisory Committee member Ken Koal for all his work on researching the property, and thank the property owners for their commitment to preserving this important piece of Lincoln's history. As far as next steps, the Notice of Intention to Designate will be reviewed by the Heritage Advisory Committee at their meeting next Thursday. Should council direct staff to proceed to issue the Notice of Intention to Designate, it will be issued to the property owner, the Ontario Heritage Trust, and published in the local newspaper and on the town's website. Following a 30-day objection period, a designation bylaw will be brought forward to council for consideration. If no objections are received, the bylaw will come into effect and will be registered on title, and a designation ceremony will be scheduled at a later date. Once the property owner has, sorry, once the property has been formally designated, the owners will be eligible to apply for a town heritage grant to support any restoration work on the property's designated heritage attributes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from committee? Counselor Timmers, please start us off.
Thank you, Chair. I, I personally don't have any questions. I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm really pleased to see that another owner has come forward and requested designation. The owner has actually passed chair of the Heritage Committee for a number of years, a few years back now. But I'm very pleased to see this property, you know, preserving our heritage helps keep our community's stories alive for future generations. And I, I really want to thank the Heritage Committee, and particularly Ken Koal, for this report. It takes a lot of time and effort to do the research, and I'm very appreciative of the work that it takes to bring this to council. So, thank you, Chair, for allowing me to make a few comments.
Thank you very much, Counselor Timmers. There being no further questions, I have a motion moved by Counselor Russell, that committee receive and file for information, Report PD-25-25 Regarding a Notice of Intention to Designate for 4881 King Street in Beamsville. The committee acknowledged the cultural and heritage value of 4881 King Street in accordance with Section 29.1 of the Ontario Heritage Act, and that committee direct staff to serve a Notice of Intention to Designate, as attached as Appendix A, for the property located at 4881 King Street in Beamsville, as a property of cultural heritage value or interest, following the requirements of Part IV, Section 29 of the Ontario Heritage Act. I will now ask our clerk to open that vote.
Thank you, Chair. The vote is open. I'll close that vote, and that carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now consider Item 7.2.4, Report PD-27-25 Regarding Municipal Support for St. David's Hydroponics CoGen Lincoln Limited Long-Term Capacity Services Project. The Director of Planning and Development will provide comments. Director Bruder, please go ahead.
Thanks, Madam Chair. This particular item is further to an application being made by St. David's Hydroponics into the Independent Electricity System Operator, or IESO, long-term co-gen facility request for proposals. And really what it entails is an expansion of an already existing facility, or a boiler room, if you will, on their property that converts natural gas into electricity. This is an RFP process that's since closed. However, one of the requirements is demonstration of municipal support. Within this particular program, it's not the Town of Lincoln that's the approval authority here, it's the IESO. We are a commenting organization, and really, the scope of those comments, or that review that the town is focused on, was, you know, from a land use perspective, is there any issues with the placement of this particular facility? In this case, it's being located, it's an expansion of their existing boiler room, which will extend over their parking lot. There's an abundance of parking, there's sufficient setbacks. This actually results in a more efficient type of electricity production, and it's also noted to be quieter than some other conventional methods. So, all in all, staff didn't have any issues with these, wanted to bring it forward for support. One of the interesting things, too, when you look at this, it's a co-gen facility, so it, it's used, obviously, for electricity for the greenhouse. There's an ability to store waste heat. But there's also situations where the IESO may require peak power from each of the three machines that are running at 3.3 megawatts each, and there could be some benefit to the local grid as well. So those are my comments, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Bruder. Do members of committee have any questions? All right, so seeing none, I have a motion moved by Counselor Reimer, that committee endorse the St. David's Hydroponics CoGen Lincoln Limited Long-Term Capacity Services Project submission to the Independent Electricity System Operator, IESO, Long-Term II, LT II, Request for Proposals, RFP Category 1, and that committee adopt the attached resolution of support as Appendix B, confirming the Town of Lincoln's support for the project to be submitted to the IESO, and that committee direct staff to be authorized to forward the signed resolution to the IESO as confirmation of municipal support. I will now ask our clerk to open that vote.
Thanks, Chair. The vote's now open. I'll close that vote. That carries.
Thank you. So as we have no further reports for the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda, I will ask the clerk to transition to our next committee agenda.
We will now begin the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda. Item 8.1, Delegations. We have no delegations this evening. 8.2, Reports. We will now consider Item 8.2.1, Report PW 10-25 Backwater Valve Pilot Subsidy Program. The Director of Public Works will provide comments. Director Graham, please go ahead.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of committee. I'd like to make a few remarks about the report before you this evening. So the objective of this pilot program really aims to support homeowners with installing a backwater valve device to help prevent the risk of sanitary sewer basement flooding during significant storm events. With climate change, we are experiencing more frequent extreme weather, intense rainfalls, that can really overwhelm municipal sewer systems, and in some cases, lead to a sanitary sewer backup situation and flooding basement risks. Backwater valve is really a plumbing device that can offer a layer of protection to a homeowner, and is really, would be most beneficial for those residents who may have had previous, previously experienced basement flooding resulting from a sewer backup. Just to highlight, in developing this initiative, staff researched amongst a number of other municipalities with similar programs, really trying to incorporate kind of a best practices approach for the one that is before you this evening. To assess community interest and measure the program's effectiveness, staff recommending the proposed backwater valve subsidy program as a pilot initiative. We feel the pilot approach will enable the town to gather valuable data, will be able to evaluate the uptake and performance. It'll be important, too, to receive feedback from applicants as we work through various applications. Then we'll be able to make informed decisions and recommendations for council's consideration on future program development, when we, when we bring updates back to council. Just to highlight as well, should council support this pilot initiative, staff do have a proactive communication and promotion strategy planned. A couple pieces to it in terms of, we, we plan to directly contact those residents who have reported basement flooding from sewer backups, say from this past April's extreme weather event that we experienced. So we'll be reaching out to those residents and letting them know about this program. And also, we're going to launch a website, a new page on our website, to further educate and get this information out to other residents who may be informed, and try and explain and provide more information on the program details around its eligibility. We'll have an online application form as well. So, with that, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dave. Are there any questions from committee? Counselor Brune, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Mikulak. Through you to Director Graham. So, Dave, the report states that for the remainder of 2025, you know, some, some of these eligible applicants can take, can participate in this pilot. I'm just wondering, you know, we, we know roughly how many people were flooded out in April, in some of the areas along Green Lane, as well as up around the Calvary Gospel Church. You know, keeping in mind that to do this repair, it's, it is a little bit intrusive to have someone come in and break up your, your basement floor. But if, if there's an uptick that goes beyond the available money, how will we handle that, in, in terms of what you're looking at for basically the next two months, November and December? Through you, Chair.
Through, Mr. Chair, to the Counselor. Thanks for the question, and that's a good, good comment. It's something we've talked about, too, internally with our finance team. It's something we've talked about, too, internally with our finance team. So for the remaining part of this year, the last couple of months, we are pretty confident we have a conservative amount of budget available in our existing 2025 budget to accommodate And then for the 2026 proposed budget, we are asking for additional funding for next year as well. But really, the program cap or limit would really be, you know, based on the amount of budget we do have available. That's what we would work with. And then if we do see more of an uptake, or, you know, there's more applicants, we would definitely come back to council with a report, let council know, and then we could talk about options in terms of, you know, do we want to allocate more funding to the budget, or, you know, defer some of the applications to the following year, et cetera. So that would be our plan.
Okay, so through you, Chair, just to be clear, so it's capped at $1,400 plus the plumbing fee of $221, so $1,621. So if we have more than, say, 20 applications, then staff will basically say that's got to be pushed into the 2026 budget, once it hits the available amount.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor, yeah, that's what we'd be looking at. Right now, we're sort of estimating around $35,000 for 2025, so.
Okay. Well, that's great. I mean, Councilor Patrick Reba and I have been dealing with a few residents, I've been dealing with a few also along the Green Lane corridor, some residents that own property there but don't live in the property, so they've got tenants there, and they've had multiple flooding over the last 25 or 30 years, and unfortunately, they've already been notified by Sedgwick that their claim has been denied. So this is something that's preventative, you know, moving forward, and I think a lot of people are going to take, you know, take the ability to participate in this. So thanks very much to you and your staff for putting this together. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselors. Just to be clear, it's $35,000. Basically, this is a first come, first served during the 2025 year. With anybody else beyond that amount is going to be the following year. Okay, perfect. Next, we have Mayor Easton. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Graham, what is the status with the insurance of anybody who's already had flooding? Does that improve the situation for them? What do you know about that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Madam Mayor. Great question. We did look into that, just for interest purposes, and it does vary. So we did phone a number of insurance companies. Some insurance companies do look at it as a bit of a prevention measure and do provide credits, or look at a credit on your insurance. Others don't as much, but it is helpful for people who may have had claims in the past, and, you know, there's some concerns about, you know, continuing to get insurance, so this would be a prevention measure that would help with that.
Okay, well, that's good to know. So through you, Mr. Chairman, when we look at the whole package of activities that we're doing as a town to prevent flooding, and we're looking at this as a remedial measure, what would our status be? How would we consider our status in terms of our ability to completely avoid flooding through all the measures that we've been taking? Do you have an answer to that question, Mr. Graham? I mean, I figure that we're doing all this work, there has to be an end to it in terms of what's advisable to do. We haven't been holding back. I'm glad to hear that this is available, but are we also reaching the end of the line in terms of the work that we need to do?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. Yeah, I mean, I would say, like, the town has been making a lot of good progress. We've been investing a lot in our INI reduction programs, so that's really where we're trying to target and remove that extra water getting into the sanitary sewer system, which is what we're speaking about tonight with this subsidy program, is to sort of, you know, protect that sanitary sewer system. So we have been doing a lot with that program in the Beamsville Ontario Street Sewer Shed, and we're doing post-monitoring to see how we're doing. We will be bringing further information to council on that program. It has been a long program. Our first approach has been, you know, trying to find out where this INI or unwanted water's coming from, you know, from various sources, downspouts, subpumps, overland, getting in from creeks, et cetera. So we've been doing a lot of that. We've been focusing on our infrastructure, trying to make it, you know, more watertight, if you will, with a lot of our relining projects that we're doing. Sort of our next phase that we're moving towards in terms of our INI reduction work is looking at a lot of the service laterals and things like that. So we have made a lot of progress with our main infrastructure, and we're now moving to more of the service side.
Okay, that's very helpful, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Graham, when do you expect that that report will be available for council?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. We're hoping to be able to bring something next year. We are currently doing some of our post-monitoring this fall, and able to collect some more flow data, and then we'll be able to have some results that we can bring an update forward.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Easton. Councilor Burnet, I see you're up.
Thank you, Chair. So through you to Director Graham. So just to follow up to the mayor's question, I'm wondering, Dave, your thoughts, you know, over the last couple of decades, this isn't the first flood, there's been a number of floods. So I take my hat off to the Town of Lincoln to look at what we're doing, but unfortunately, maybe I've been pretty close to this last flood, and I've seen letters come from the insurance company. And I feel very sad for a lot of residents that have had to deal with multiple flooding, especially when it seems like there is a bit of a ping pong ball being played between the region and to the town. These are letters from the insurance company to the property owners. So through you, Chair, I'm wondering, through to you, Director Graham, we're doing what we can do. What is the region doing to ensure that their network, their pumping stations, are going to not fail moving forward in some of these heavy flood areas?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselor. Great question. I mean, so the region who are responsible for the, you know, the end of the line, if you will, all the sanitary sewer wastewater goes down to their trunk system at the end of Ontario Street, to the pumping station. So they have, you know, through master planning, identified where we need to look at upgrades to accommodate our growth, also looking at climate change impacts. So, you know, the Niagara region, they do have design work underway to do those upgrades to those systems. We definitely want to continue to advocate how important it is for them to make those investments, but they are in the process of coming up with a design plan to then start investing in those upgrades.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Certainly a challenging issue, water, supplying it, removing it, getting rid of it. I think this is a fine program to demonstrate that the Town of Lincoln is trying to assist those that may be challenged, for whatever reason these water issues occur. I'm not sure who here has experienced this sort of thing personally, but it's not fun, and appreciate the effort that is being made to assist those that may need this sort of help. There be no further questions. I have a motion moved by Councilor Reimer that committee receive and file for information Report PW-10-25 regarding a proposed backwater valve pilot subsidy program for residents in the Town of Lincoln. That committee approve the proposed backwater valve pilot subsidy program both retroactively to January 1, 2025, for the remainder of 2025 for eligible applicants being funded from the approved 2025 sanitary sewer operating budget, and that funding for the continuation of the proposed backwater valve pilot subsidy program be incorporated into the 2026 budget for consideration. I will now ask our clerk to open the vote.
Thanks, Chair. The vote is now open. I'll close that vote. That carries.
Thank you very much. Item number nine, confidential items. We will now consider Agenda Item 9, Motion to Consider Confidential Items. Before I read the motion, we will move into closed. I would like to explain what will happen for those watching this meeting online. Staff will be turning off the live webcast during the closed portion of the meeting. Once we have completed the closed portion of the meeting, we will resume with the live broadcast and carry on with the public portion of the meeting, and we'll read the motions in public session. I have a motion moved by Councilor Burnet. Under Section 239 of the Municipal Act, notices hereby given that committee adjourn to closed session in order to address Item 9.1 as follows. Pursuant to the Municipal Act, Section 239, 2E, litigation or potential litigation including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality; B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees; F, advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose; and K, a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried out on or to be carried out on behalf of the municipality or local board pertaining to legal matters. I will now ask our clerk to open the vote.
Thanks, Chair. The vote is now open. Thank you.
Staff will now proceed with the technical requirements to move into closed session. Staff will now proceed with the technical requirements to move into closed session.
Okay, perfect. We're back in open session. I have a motion moved by Counselor Murray that committee resume an open session. I will ask our clerk to call out the vote.
Thank you, and the vote is now open. And I'll close that vote. That carries, thank you.
I have a motion moved by Counselor Pachariva, and I'm going to ask our clerk to read the motion that we prepared.
Thanks, Chair. And so this is a motion moved by Counselor Pachariva that committee receive and file the confidential updates, and that staff proceed as directed in closed session with respect to items in the agenda 9.1 pursuant to section 239, 2B, E, F, and K of the Municipal Act 2001 as a matter pertains to personal matters about an identifiable individual litigation or potential litigation, including matters before an administrative tribunal, advice subject to client solicitor privilege, and negotiations carried on or to be carried on behalf of the municipality, and that committee rescind the confidential status of the report titled Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment by Booze Fields, Inc., 5205 King Street, Report Number PD 2825, considered in closed session at the Committee of the Whole Meeting held November 3, 2025, and that staff be directed to publish the report in the public agenda package, and that the chief administrative officer be directed to communicate that the report is now public and to provide a summary of the discussion and outcome. Chair, I will now move to open for voting.
Okay.
And the vote is now open. I'll close that vote, and that carries, thank you.
Okay, we are now at committee remarks. Do we have any committee remarks from members of the council? No? Number 11, adjournment. There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned at 9:34 PM.